Good evening. The September 13th, 2021 Special Meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. This special meeting has been called in order for the council to conduct interviews of the Board of Education District One candidates. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. And please note, you must wear your mask at all times. If you have to take a drink or something, that's okay, but put it back on. Please pause now or stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Ms. Rodvian.
So I thought this would be a good opportunity to do something a little bit different for the invocation today. So I'm reading from the Board of Education handbook, just a short piece from the philosophy and mission. "The Board of Education of Anarundel County believes that all students have a right to educational opportunities of equality and caliber which will develop their potential as individuals and citizens. Acting on the belief that every individual is valuable and should have the opportunity for a sound education, the public schools have an obligation to serve all students. Programs will be provided for students regardless of their gender, sexual orientation, disability, or cultural, social, economic, racial, religious, or ethnic heritage. Students will master standards that are rigorous, rich, and relevant to the real world so that they gain knowledge and skills necessary for success in college and careers. The mission of the Board is to provide leadership, vision, and support to the public school system that ensures an equitable, world-class education that creates a culture of lifelong learning by promoting community collaboration, developing responsive policies, and holding itself accountable for the results." And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Ms. Rodvian. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. Since this is a special meeting, I'm going to take a moment to explain how this meeting is going to go. We're going to begin with the candidates coming down to the table. You'll have up to four minutes per person to make an opening statement. Then we'll go into a first round of questions from the council. Each council member will ask a question that each candidate will then have the opportunity to answer, and you'll have up to two minutes to answer those questions. When we get through that, we will allow those who have brought individuals to speak on their behalf to come make their statements, up to two minutes, and that's up to two people per candidate. We will then move into the public hearing. Members of the public may speak, up to two minutes per person, just like our regular meetings. We will then proceed to a final round of questions from the council, same procedure as the first round, and then finally, closing statements. Each candidate will have up to two minutes for your closing statement. With that, do any of my colleagues have any questions? We will begin our questioning round with Ms. Rodvian tonight and go around in our normal order like we would for voting. Okay, at this time, may I have the candidates, please calm down. Carolyn Williams, Diana Ma, Dwight Christopher Martin, and Gloria Dent. Okay, for the record, we have Ms. Williams, Ms. Ma, and Ms. Dent here, and we're going to try to reach Mr. Martin, but in the meantime, we will go ahead and begin. Ms. Williams, you may give your opening statement, please. You have up to four minutes.
Good evening, Chairwoman Lacy, Vice Chairwoman Rodvian, and distinguished council members. My name is Carolyn Williams. I am a proud current resident and product of District One. Over four years ago, I stood in front of my peers for my run as student board member and prepared to read a speech I pre-wrote but could barely get through the first sentence. You're probably wondering why that matters now. I couldn't get through the speech because, excuse me, half of my campaign staff was unable to make it on Election Day. There was a rhetorical essay written at North County High School that offended many, and members of my campaign staff made the decision to stay at school and help their community, process, and heal. I scrapped my entire speech to talk about what was going on at North County, my home. Now look at this full-circle moment. There's a possibility that I can represent a district that has given me so much. District One will always be my home. My grandmother lives two minutes from Cromwell Elementary School. My family grew up in Morris Hill, Cedar Hill, and Pumphrey. My nephews attended Bell Grove Elementary and now Brooklyn Park Middle. My mom, uncles, and aunts all went to the former Andover High School, now Lindell Middle School, which I attended and was where I discovered my passion for public service and advocacy. District One is home. When my mom and I struggled the most finding ourselves homeless, it was our family and friends and neighbors in Heritage Hills and North County who took us in. Excuse me. It was my teachers and counselors who helped us find furniture when we finally found our home. It was my former board members who helped me perform my duties and responsibilities without feeling like my background made me less than. It was my story, my journey, that helped me empathize with what the students were going through to make decisions for them, the students. That's what I'm here for. That's who I am here for. I want to find the best way to serve the needs of our students, faculty, and staff. I want to hold myself and my colleagues accountable to make sure that we are doing all that we can to best serve our communities. Through collaboration, compassion, and action, we can do amazing things for those in District One and throughout the entire county. I have been here before. I've handled the operating and capital budget. I have dealt with negotiations with the bargaining units. I have stood up for what I believed was best, and I want to be here again. When I was away in college, I was the captain of my bowling team, and something I would say to my teammates was, "To the end," meaning that the game wasn't over until it was over, until that last shot was thrown. Continue to fight. I am ready to work to the end for my district, for students, for families, for the entire county, because if it wasn't for the families, friends, teachers, faculty, and staff that fought for me, I wouldn't be where I am now. District One is home. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. When you're ready, Madam Secretary. Ms. Ma.
The fabric of our society is being torn apart now because we no longer understand each other. Each of us is occupied by our own daily struggles, and it takes a good deal of effort to stop, look up, and recognize the burdens being carried by someone else. We now understand that this problem is exacerbated by the tools that handle big data. The same tools that were created to make the world easier to navigate are dividing us into tribes of like-minded people. The problem is that once comfortably settled into our own echo chambers, deprived of the rich diversity of ideas and perspectives that are the strength of this nation, it is trivial to lead us astray. Bringing awareness to this problem and formulating solutions has been an important aspect of my work for the past several years, focused primarily on higher education. Recent events, however, have spurred my interest in expanding efforts to include K-12 education. I believe strongly that the public education system can and must be sufficient to train the people that will be our future. My understanding of how the K-12 system works is very limited and has been pointed out repeatedly in this process. You have some really great candidates here to select from, but if selected, I'm willing to listen and I'm able to learn. A while back, I wrote a blurb describing how the scientific method can serve as a useful framework. Importantly, this framework is accessible at the K-12 level. We are all lifelong learners, and especially in this era of disinformation and conspiracy theories, critical thinking skills will be essential. Here's a brief story to illustrate my point. I grew up not far from the campus of Michigan State University. There's a place on campus where people can wade in the Red Cedar River and feed ducks. As a young girl, my family would often feed ducks on warm summer weekends. Sadly, there would come a time each year when the ducks would disappear. My hypothesis was that in late autumn, a man gathers the ducks and brings them to a warehouse where they overwinter. Then in the summer, he'll put them back out on the river. My hypothesis fit all of the available observations. The ducks disappeared in the autumn, and they came back in the summer. There were often people driving around in maintenance trucks in many warehouses nearby in which the ducks could be stored. As a test of my hypothesis, I might decide to count the number of ducks present each day or the frequency, times, and distances at which each maintenance truck passed the river. An analysis of this data might reveal that only certain maintenance trucks and personnel were likely duck-moving candidates, leading me to further refine my hypothesis about the type of truck necessary. Alternately, I might find that ducks do not, in fact, disappear in late autumn. Rather, their numbers slowly decrease, starting around the time that students arrive on campus. This might lead me to hypothesize that a link between the density of students and duck disappearances. I would be on the wrong track. The correct way to approach my hypothesis is to design a test that can disprove the null. In this case, the null hypothesis is that there is no man who has duck-gathering responsibilities, or perhaps that ducks do not overwinter in warehouses. If I was unable to find evidence to support either of these, then the null hypothesis stands, and confidence in my hypothesis must diminish. If I was able to disprove the null, then only then is confidence in my hypothesis increased. The seven is does not prove my hypothesis, but I get more confidence. The graduates of the K-12 system must leave with the foundation necessary to make well-reasoned decisions from the information they receive. Only then will they be prepared to take full advantage of the opportunities this country offers them. Critical and creative thinking can be integrated into every subject matter, and I'm interested in helping make this happen. Wow.
Thank you, Ms. Ma. Madam Secretary, you ready there? Yeah, okay. Ms. Dent.
Good afternoon. Chairwoman Lacy and members of the Board, thank you all for having us here today. I am Gloria Denise Dent. I am from rural Alabama. That's important because that's where my roots was born. I'm a proud, proud recipient of the public education, and I know the importance of public education. This is why I've not only dedicated my life, the rest of my life, to ensuring that children have the right to learn regardless of their background, regardless of where they come from. And so I've created a nonprofit organization to do just that, regardless of where you come from, having the right to learn. The other thing that's important about why I'm here today is because I would be a hypocrite if I didn't stand up for what I believe in. I know that Anarundel County is a great place to live. I'm a migrant here. I moved all over the world, and I had to make a decision on where do I want to be when I grow up or when I leave the military. And I chose Anarundel County. I had several individuals say, "Oh, Montgomery County is it." Oh, well, you have to go over to Prince George County. But when I thought about where I want to be, it is somewhere where I can move forward in my life, and that having children and grandchildren, as I stay here, they can have somewhere to grow. And I know that Anarundel County is that. So I'm dedicated not only to people when I was in my military career, I'm also dedicated to the community that I serve. And so since I've been here since 2017, I've dedicated a lot of time and resources to making sure that our community is a better place. The one pinnacle thing, pivotal thing, that brought me to where I'm at today is looking at a lot of underserved communities, speaking about one topic that I'm pretty sure will come up at some point tonight is the shortage of bus drivers, just various different things. Even meeting you, Chairwoman Lacy, back in 2017 about how passionate you was about this bus and how your children are being impacted by the education system. So I know that that is important for me to not only just not be an innocent bystander, but also to be involved. Lastly, I will tell you this. What you get from me will not be just what you think you see. It will always be what is to be. And I say that because I read poems every single day, and my favorite poem is "Nobody Sees the Kid in a Little Red Coat." And the poem's just simple. No one sees the kid in a real little red coat. Did he eat this morning? Did she sleep last night? Was her mother at home? Do you know if she studied? Do you know if she has homework? Do you know if they even have anything to eat? But that's okay. This morning, when she got up, she walked out the door. She headed to school with a little red coat on, just about time to catch the bus, the bus departed, because they didn't see the little girl with the little red coat on. So it's important to me that everybody sees every kid, regardless of whether I am here as a parent, regardless if I'm here as a community person. And tonight, I'm here to express to you that I want to be a part of it, and so your decision for me will not prevent me from continuing to be an active member of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dent. Okay, it's time for our first round of council questions. Ms. Rodvian, you get to start us off. Council members do not have time limits on our questions, but for the sake of everyone's time, it would be nice if we would try to keep our questions to a minute or something. And then after your question, I will call on a candidate and try to circulate among you so that nobody answers us. You know, nobody's always first, nobody's always last. I'll try. Okay, Ms. Rodvian.
Madam Chair, I'm so sorry to interrupt. May I give you an update on Mr. Martin?
Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I hopefully will be starting with a question that you've probably thought a lot about in the process of this application. One of the most important things that the Board of Education does is create the budget or take the recommendations from the superintendent's budget and, you know, make any changes or alterations. What do you consider your top three areas where you believe investment in education needs to be made?
Ms. Dent.
Could you repeat to make sure that I'm right? What do I consider the top three investments that needs to be made in education from the budget?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I actually don't have my question written down, but basically, I'm looking for, you know, of all the different aspects of education, what do you think are the top three areas where we need to be making financial investments?
Okay. So my top three would, one would be facilities. I am a big proponent of making sure that everyone has a positive learning environment, all the stakeholders, teachers can teach better, the students can learn better, and just having a better facility altogether, well-run facility. The other area that would be my top one is the operational support. I do know that teachers spend a lot of money, their own money individually, and I know that our resources could be better utilized. And my final one would be on the staff and faculty that supports our education system. I think that within the county, that there's some work to be done on how our educators are being paid, how our maintenance, as well as everyone else that supports our school, are being paid. So I do think a lot of emphasis needs to be placed on that, and I certainly will be looking to work with the county council as well as the superintendent on how we can energize that. Thank you.
Ms. Ma.
So very glad that this guy answered first. Without ever having taken a look at the school, I think probably facilities, teacher, continuing education, and teacher pay. I think that having inspirational teachers and having inspirational teachers is what spurred me to learn, certainly. And so having an inspirational teacher corps would be key.
Ms. Williams.
So the three that I have would be improvement to facilities, so making sure that, is that on my end? I apologize.
The red light means your microphone is on.
Yeah, the feedback that I heard, I apologize for that.
You can turn the lights on and off by just tapping, it looks like a face with sound. You're welcome to turn it on and off. I'll do my best to help you with that, okay?
Thank you. So like I was saying, improvement to facilities through our capital budget, such as something that's really, that I really enjoyed seeing within my district is the updating of the HVAC systems for North County High School. So look into more ways that we'll be able to do things like that, that would be number one. Number two is making sure that our faculty and staff are paid adequately, excuse me, through the operating part of the budget. And number three is community involvement. If there's any way that we can work together with the superintendent and his staff and the county council to fund more mentoring programs or after-school programs, things of that nature, then that's something that I would want to do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, your turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Harris, District Seven. Councilwoman Rodvian read from the mission and vision, or the philosophy and mission of the Board of Education, and part of that, I'm just going to repeat here, says, "The education provided must be efficient, effective..." Sorry, wow, I can't talk. Let's try this again. "The education provided must be efficient, effective, conducted in a humane and disciplined environment, and accomplished at a cost in keeping with the best principles of financial management and responsibility to the taxpayers." Ms. Williams, you used the word accountability in your opening statement, and I thought that that was a helpful word. I'd like to understand from each one of you how you propose to keep yourself accountable, the board accountable, and the school accountable in this financial management aspect.
Ms. Williams.
So something that I've said, something that I live by, is that I'm slow to speak but fast to listen. So to hold myself accountable, I would ensure that I am listening and learning the elements of the budget that I may not know very well, but I'm willing to learn those things, and through learning those things, I'm holding myself accountable as well as holding my colleagues accountable. So I believe that it's a learning curve. You have to be willing and ready to learn and then put those things into action. If I was not holding myself accountable, I would step out on something that I was not sure of or didn't have a well-rounded knowledge on. I don't intend on doing that. I don't like doing that. So I would make sure that I have a full understanding of what it is that I'm doing before I do. Thank you.
Ms. Ma.
So I think, I'm referring back to our HOA, I think it's the responsibility, or it should be a duty of the school board members, I think, to either put out a newsletter or some sort of continuous outreach and also establish a continuous listening method. So whether that be school board meetings or attending their, attending the PTA meetings to listen, to understand what the needs of the community are, I think establishing that practice as a regular practice of the board, I think, is important to understand the needs of your constituents.
And Ms. Dent.
So I think two words that you used was being efficient and effective. The rules are in place for a reason. Governing financial and fiscal responsibility of how we become good stewards of not only the funding that is spent, how we're utilizing it becomes a law, becomes a legal process. I'm a big proponent of facts. I'm a big proponent of data, that makes sense, and making sure that the data actually has data behind the data to support it. The one thing that I do know, though, is that when it comes to being efficient and effective, you have to put a process in place in order for you to figure out if you've got that outcome. The thing that helps me hold myself accountable as well as others is ensuring that I follow the rules, ensure that I comply with them, and making sure that it's not only a legal responsibility, but it's also a moral and ethical responsibility to not only be good stewards of the mission and vision that we have set forth here that the board has put into place, but also to comply with that. So for me, being effective and efficient also means that you have to pay attention to what's been put in writing. If it's not there, then we're not only holding ourselves accountable, but we need to develop a process to ensure that we have accountability and have it in place.
Thank you. Ms. Pickard, it is your turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, candidates. I have too many questions, but I'm going to stick to my one. These are challenging times to be in public service. How will you manage the division that BOE members face on social media with important policy decision-making?
Ms. Ma. Could I ask you to refine or expand a little bit on the question? I'm sorry.
I can try. Just as you, if you have not, if you're not familiar with current Board of Education meetings or events of late, you can, if I could draw, they're not unlike any other public body currently that we face, that we see in 2021, so...
But with regard to social media? I'm sorry.
Often, communication currently from constituents is via social media.
Yes, okay. So how would I handle it? I think that is sort of, I was trying to figure out how your question overlaps with the reason why I'm running. So I think social media has a huge effect on our society as a whole, not only council meetings and school boards. I think it is, I'm trying to, without knowing specifically what your question is, I apologize. I think that it is still incumbent upon the board to be responsive, but to try to keep the temperature down. Does that answer? I'm sorry if that doesn't answer your question. Okay. Okay.
Ms. Dent.
Regardless of what category, thank you, that you're in. So those decisions sometimes upset people emotionally. And to answer your question about my response, it would not only be well-thought-out, but I would certainly seek other board members' opinion before we jump straight out and respond to someone's emotional outburst on social media. So for me, it would be a well-thought-out response before I actually respond, if I thought it was necessary for us to respond. But I certainly wouldn't just try to go toe-to-toe with someone on social media.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Social media is a lovely platform for us to get in touch with our constituency. I am aware of that, and I like that fact. But as I mentioned in my previous answer, slow to speak, fast to listen. There's a reason why people go to social media and express themselves. I would want to see what it is that they're saying, but before I jump out and respond, I would make sure that I understand what the concern is, communicate with my fellow board members, and if a response is necessary, then respond through social media. There are a multitude of ways that social media can be used to get in touch with the constituency, so I believe that there is a benefit to it, but we have to be very careful with what we put out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey, your turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I appreciate the comments thus far about fiscal responsibility and accountability in the board budget. Looking at the current county council past budget for this year, the Board of Education is 47.7% is 47.7% of the overall budget. We spent $892,541,000 at the Board of Education in this current fiscal year. My question for you is, what percentage of the county budget do you believe is appropriate to go to education? And to the extent that you would see the council put more money into education, which often happens when the board brings us a budget, how do you propose we pay for that?
It's my turn. Ms. Dent?
So, I think that question is very loaded, I will say to you. How much? I don't think I have the answer to how much. We do spend a lot of money on education, but we do it because it's very important, especially on our school Board of Education budget. Our kids are really, you can't put a price on there. But at the end of the day, we do have to have fiscal responsibility, and our budget is limited, and how do we do it? So, the answer to your question is, is that I don't have the answer to that right now. I do not have an answer on how or how much I would say that goes toward the board. What I do know is a lot of work has to be done in us deciding what the right package is for our schools and for our Board of Education to be able to do the right things by our students by ensuring that they have the best quality of learning.
Ms. Williams?
So, I'm not going to throw a number out there because I don't want it to be incorrect. So, I'm going to say that I don't know. But I would like to work with the county council and my fellow board members to figure out what exactly that percentage or number would be that would be able to help us best ensure that our students, faculty, and staff get the best out of what we're able to offer them here in the county. So, I'm ready to work to figure that out.
Ms. Ma?
So, I also wouldn't put out a number. However, what I would say is that I would put an emphasis on education over many aspects of, not, not over. I think, I think that the opportunity for education, that education should be viewed as sort of a force multiplier in, in, in any society. It not only brings up the next generation and employs teachers, but it also contributes to a more well, a society that can, that understands what the, what the value of being a society is and civility and, so, better health outcomes. It is, education is not just an investment in, in 100 students or 1,000 students, whatever. It's, it is an investment in the society. And so, so I would put an emphasis on education. How you would pay for it, I think that you look for, you look for places where you can get force multipliers. You know, you, whenever, whenever you spend a dollar, if you can spend a dollar and accomplish two things with, with that one dollar, then that's, that's better, much better than spending a dollar just on one thing. And so, so I think you should absolutely look for those opportunities to, to, I hate to use force multiplier again, but to, to, to get the best bang out of your buck.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski?
Good evening and welcome to you all. I guess my question relates to your first 30 days. You know, the board, like the council, has processes for dates and understanding how the budget works. So, I would like to hear from each of you on how you understand that process with the Board of Ed. If you want to talk about the capital or operating, but your first 30 days, what are your plans as a board member and seeing you understand the role? Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
So, having served on the board before, I am aware of how extensive the budget season is, how there's so many different parts of the budget that you have to go through in that period of time. So, during my first 30 days, I would want to make sure that I'm getting caught up to speed with what it is that my fellow board members may have already started talking about in regards to the budget, so that I'm up to speed with them, and then make sure that I'm making myself available to, make sure that I'm making myself available to understand all aspects of the budget, different things that each one of my board members are pushing for, as well as the needs of my district. So, I would want to make sure that I'm communicating with my community to see what it is that they want to see within this budget, this budget cycle. Thank you.
Ms. Dent?
I think the first 30 days are critical. Getting a great understanding of what is going on with the budget and how we spend the budget, for me, would not be my first focus. My focus is really understanding why we're spending, what we're spending, within the budget. Certainly working with not only the fellow board members, but also with the county council and the staff to figure out, how did we come to the numbers that we did and why is this important? So, it's a lot of work to be done. So, I spent the last three years on the planning and advisory committee for the county, and the budget is probably the worst two weeks of my life. I just really know that there's a lot of energy from various different groups that come before the planning advisory committee in order for us to be able to come to a conclusive decision. And what I found each time is that everyone puts the necessary energy that they need to into it, and so it's all done with the intent to gain something, which is funding. So, I know that it's well thought out. So, I won't take, I won't be light when it comes to realizing that people have spent their time trying to come to that conclusion on what's the right dollar amount for the budget. At the same time, I do always believe that because you presented me a number doesn't mean that that is the right number. So, for me, I will do a deep dive to figure out if this is the right number. We should be working with the budget and even understanding, gain a better understanding through other board members on how do we get to this conclusion? And then, do we need to revisit this line item in the budget? So, certainly a lot of work to be done. I don't know if I will be able to accomplish it in 30 days because the budget is so extensive, but I would spend majority of my 30 days trying to really understand the why in the budget.
Ms. Ma?
I think I would, I would spend, if selected, I would spend previous to my 30, my first 30 days, I have a lot of homework to do, to learn, so that, so that when I hit my first, when I hit day zero, I can hit the ground running. But I think that once, once I have, once I have done all of the homework necessary, it's, it is important to understand every line item, and it's important to understand where the money's going, why, why my predecessors and why the current board thinks the, thinks the budget needs to be spent in a particular way, and why it's important, you know, how they, how the different pieces interact with each other, and where you can find, where you can find, if you can, if you can combine things to get a better outcome, to combine items and, and create, and create force multipliers. I think that's, that's where, that's where I want to concentrate, is try to make the budget work as efficiently as it can for the students.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank each of you for coming out this evening and for applying for a very important role in our county. So, my question to each of you is, what are the two biggest challenges facing students in District 1, and how do you see your part on the school board helping to overcome them?
Ms. Ma?
Well, having sat in on the orientation session, or the session with the previous board members, I know COVID-19 is a huge issue for this coming year. And the other issue is probably, probably a lot of the societal issues that are going on right now with, I know that there's, there's equity and race issues and LGBTQ issues and, you know, those, those types of, the societal disparity issues that we have. So, I think with regard to COVID-19, I think we have to be creative about how we solve, about how we get students a quality education in these trying times. I think that that's, that's going to be, that's going to take a lot of creative thinking and a lot of, a lot of problem solving. As far as the societal issues, I think that it's a lot of listening to what everybody, what concerns everybody and trying to, trying to moderate the temperature of the conversation and let people, let people work on solutions together. Because I think, I think that we can't keep yelling at each other and expect a solution to, to emerge. We have to, we have to try to understand each other's point of view.
Ms. Williams?
So, if I could speak on two issues in the immediate and then speak broadly, if that's okay. So, two issues in the immediate is the overpopulation of schools and how that relates in terms of COVID-19 and how we're dealing with that. I think that that is an issue that we need to look into and discuss moving forward and what the options and plans would be in order to reduce the overpopulation in our schools in District 1, especially in the North County feeder. And that would be one of the, it ties into COVID-19. So, it's the two. My apologies for that. But then broadly speaking, I don't want to speak on an issue or create an issue that does not exist in my district. So, I would wanted to get out, speak with my community, figure out what it is that their needs are, what it is that's concerning them, what's keeping them up at night, and how it is, from my position, that I can help them solve that. So, I don't want to create issues that may not be there, but I do know countywide, dealing with that overpopulation in schools and just COVID in general is something that we, as a board, as a county, are going to have to discuss and address. Thank you.
Ms. Dent?
So, my top two is mental health and safety, safe return of our schools back to what I call the normal-as-can-be learning environment. Mental health for a whole lot of reasons. So, I think it's not only mental health just for the students, it's mental health for all the stakeholders involved in a learning environment. There are a lot of concerns of going back to school, there's a lot of anxiety associated with not only that of the students, but also of the parents and the educators. I think that they have a passion for what they do. I appreciate all the educators for being just what I call part of the front line, being able to interact with the students. And just the psyche of not knowing whether the teacher is vaccinated, whether the student is vaccinated, where, you know, the parent is vaccinated, there's a lot of things that goes in. And I know myself personally, that's anxiety for me just from going back to work. So, I would think the same thing there. But the one concern that I have that I top in my mental health stance is that, we talk about a lot of mental health for students, but I think we need to expand that to make sure that we have mental health for our educators and faculties as well. So, that would be one of the top. The second one is safety. So, safety in all different aspects. I look at safety for more than just about COVID-19. COVID-19 has created an opportunity, if you ask, if you will, for us to be in a safe, clean, healthy environment. But there's also some other safety concerns about bullying, returning to the environment when it talks to health, when it talks about the well-being of the child, just a plethora of things that fall upon the safety for me. So, my top two concerns with, are mental health and the safety in concern for everyone.
Thank you. My turn, and I'm going to throw you a warm fuzzy softball. I'd like you each to share how a teacher impacted your life. For example, I'll share very quickly. I had a high school English teacher that I had on two different years, freshman year and senior year. When she found out where I was going to college, she wrote on an essay of mine, an argumentative essay. She wrote, "Are you sure you wouldn't rather be a lawyer than an engineer?" And I became both. So, and I've always kept her in mind. So, I toss that question to you, how a teacher impacted your life. And first is Carolyn. Ms. Williams, excuse me.
I would have to say Mrs. Staveley. She was my ninth-grade English teacher at Glenbernie High School. I had the honor of being a part of the biomedical allied health program at Glenbernie. So, she was my ninth-grade English teacher, but she remained a safe space for me to go to throughout my four years at Glenbernie High School. She always encouraged me to pursue my dreams. She was one of the first people I told when I ran for my previous position for student board member. She went above and beyond the duties of a teacher and stayed with me even after I graduated, continued to check on me while I was at Howard University. I'm trying not to get emotional because when somebody or something means so much to me, I get extremely passionate about it. And Mrs. Staveley will always be somebody who stays strong in my heart. I shouted her out in my graduation speech from Glenbernie High School. When you find gems in teachers, faculty, or staff like that, they stick with you and they mean something to you. And my passion for writing and for the written work definitely stems from her classroom and being comfortable in a new school, a new environment, because it was out of my district, definitely, I would have to say it was partly because of Miss Staveley. So, Miss Staveley, if you are watching this right now, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ma?
I would have to say my high school, my high school biology teacher, because she's responsible for making me a biologist, the, as I was, I was mentioning earlier, inspirational teachers, I think, have the ability to change your life. And she would always bring in, if I had, I actually considered the possibility of bringing in a little object lesson for, lesson for this meeting tonight, but I didn't due to time. She had, she had, she buried items in Play-Doh and asked us to try to guess what was inside of the items. And that experiment was, was her way of teaching us the null hypothesis, which is what I discussed. And, and it inspired, it opened up an entire new world for me of the way of looking at, you know, the world and the facts that I see and what I don't see. And I have been able to apply that throughout my, throughout my life to different, different studies that I've done, so.
Ms. Dent?
My favorite teacher is Ms. Eddy Kip, and she's actually still living today. So, in high school, very, very small high school, I'm from Mountville, Alabama. If you haven't heard of that, you should Google it. It's the home of all American Indians in Alabama. And so, I'd won a scholarship from my high school. I'd gone to the University of Alabama. That's everybody, if you're old time family, that's what everybody want to go to, is University of Alabama. And of course, I did too. And so, I get the scholarship. She was the home economics teacher, and the scholarship was for me to go to the University of Alabama to become a farmer. Well, I grew up on a farm, did not want to do that. But I also could not let down my family because I'm a first generation, would have been a first-generation college student, to my knowledge. So, I didn't want to let down my grandparents, I didn't want to let down my mother, and I certainly didn't want to let down all my teachers who had worked so hard to get me the scholarship. And I'm standing in home economics, and Ms. Kips comes to me, and she said, "Why do I get to feel and there's something bothering you?" And I said, "It is." I said, "I just, I don't mind going to college, but I just don't know if that's what I really want to do, and I don't want to waste $40,000. Someone's giving me $40,000." And she said, "You know, the great thing about being, graduating is that at some point, you turn 18, you can do what you want to." And so, I said, "Well, why is that so great?" She said, "Because, just because I give you, you know, they give you $40,000 doesn't mean that you're going to go to college. Also, doesn't mean that you're going to graduate. What it does mean is it's going to give you an opportunity. So, if you had the opportunity right now to do something, what would it be?" And I said, "Well, I don't know." She said, "Well, until you figure that out, you should not be worried about going to college, you should not be worried about graduating, you should be worried about what it is that if you had the opportunity to do, what would you do?" And so, I went home, I came back the next morning, and I said, "I want to go to the Army." And she said, "Are you serious?" And I said, "Yes." So, she said, "Make a decision." And I did. I made a decision to come in the Army, and I was 17 years old, and to this day, we still keep in touch.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, welcome. I'm glad you can join us. The question, which was the last of our first round of questions, was to share how a teacher impacted your life. You have two minutes.
I would say that one of the teachers that dramatically impacted my life is Coach Ron Evans. Had a... Evans at Arundel Senior High School. I was, I don't know, I wasn't the best of students. I didn't do well in my grades in 10th grade. I ended up failing and went to summer school to pass. In 11th grade was a repeat of 10th grade. There were some other circumstances surrounding that. At 12th grade, I ran track for the first year. He called me out and said, "I see some promise in you, I see some things that you may be able to do something if I can get your track scholarship." Well, it turns out that he did. It was a small college in West Texas, Odessa Junior College. He had sent a couple of other runners there the year before. But the fact that he just believed in me, he always did. He never marginalized me, he never made me feel less than. And I was a military kid, and one thing, we didn't grow up with family. My dad was 24 years Air Force. We didn't have family around us, always wanted to belong. Well, he gave me a sense of belonging. That was a step that led me to a full scholarship at the University of Texas at Austin. And subsequent to that, because of where I was and things that happened, I met my wife for 45 years, and I will never cease to thank Coach Evans for his faith in me.
Thank you, sir. So, next on our agenda are the statements on behalf of the candidates. And I guess to do this, given that our microphones are all at the table, I'm going to ask the candidates to please go out and sit in the audience. And we will have, let's see, Scott Holworth and Julie Hummer are going to speak on Ms. And is there anybody else here to give a statement on behalf of a candidate specifically? And if not, after that, we will be doing public testimony. So I just want to make sure we cross off this part of our agenda. Okay. Mr. Holworth, you may go first.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chairwoman Lacy, Vice Chairwoman Radvian, and members of the County Council. My name is Scott Harth, and I'm honored to be here tonight to speak on behalf of Ms. Carolyn Williams. I first met Carolyn when we were about 13 years old in Crask. Even at that young of an age, I knew she was deeply committed to the community and had a sense of service and leadership that would outshine everybody else. She used a quote from a song saying, "We fall down but get up." Our communities have taken a little stumble over the last couple of years, but it is time to rally and unify the system to learn and recover from all these experiences. Carolyn is the right person to help propel the county forward. Carolyn lives her life learning from her experiences and continuing to grow. Her personal story and successes through hardship are a testament to her work ethic and drive to be the best version of herself. She is humble, passionate, and honest. She is steadfast in her beliefs and absolutely cannot be bought, coerced, or bullied into making a decision. Her integrity is unmatched. You can be confident that her vote is her own and with the students' best interest at heart. During her tenure, she sat through negotiations with all the different bargaining units, taking in all the information and ultimately voting on the finalized plan. She is the only candidate in front of you tonight with this unique experience. She championed issues for underserved kids in North County while keeping in mind what is best for everybody across the entire school system. Her greatest asset is her ability to listen more and speak less. She takes in all the information, asks questions, and makes fact-based decisions in the best interest of all students. You all are selecting someone that will have a direct impact on the future of this county. These are future scientists, business owners, and voters roaming the hallways of our schools. This is not a political position by design because educating our youth is not political. Carolyn will bring this mindset to the boardroom. Listen to her speak, listen to her story. She is a testament to everything that is great about our school system. She knows her community, she knows the schools, and she knows the position. She will not play politics with our, with your students' education. Thank you for your time and giving me the opportunity to speak on her behalf.
Thank you. Ms. Hummer.
Good evening. My name is Julie Hummer, and I served on the Anarunno County Public Schools Board of Education from 2015 to 2020. During that time, I had the pleasure to serve alongside Carolyn Williams. Carolyn distinguished herself with her preparation, thoughtfulness, and maturity, and those qualities have only grown in the years since. As a long-serving board member, I always look to other members for expertise that would benefit the board as a whole. Carolyn has many qualities that make her both an outstanding individual candidate, but also a true complement to the board as a body. First, she brings the perspective of someone who is not distantly removed from the actual school experience. She is a successful graduate of both her neighborhood schools and one of our magnet programs, and she has actually lived what works well and what can be made better. She's a lifelong resident of the heart of District One. She knows firsthand the specific challenges facing children and families in the northern part of the county, from school overcrowding to food and housing insecurity to addiction and violence. Her community trusts her and will share their concerns with her because she is one of them. And finally, Carolyn has a broad understanding of the school system as a whole. She has visited schools across the county, she has taken part in collective bargaining negotiations and crafting budgets and drafting school policy. One of the biggest challenges the board will face in the next couple of years is the redistricting around the new Old Mill High School. As a veteran of multiple redistricting actions, I cannot stress enough how valuable her prior experience from redistricting the Annapolis Cluster will be. Let me end with a note about one of Carolyn's most outstanding qualities. She was not a board member who felt a need to comment on every item. Instead, she let her vote speak for her, and she saved her words when they would have the most impact. That thoughtfulness and focus would be an outstanding addition to the board. The children and families of District One would be well-served in Carolyn Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open a public hearing on the issue of the vacancy in the District One seat on the Board of Education. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do have a sign-up sheet with two people on it, and if there are others in the audience who would like to speak, you can come down front, or I'll call again after these two speak. Connor Curran and Emily Mosher. Mr. Curran.
Good evening, Chairwoman Lacy, Vice Chairwoman Radvian, and members of the Council. My name is Connor Curran, resident of Pasadena and a student leader in Anarunno County. Tonight, I am here to urge the Council to vote in support of Carolyn Williams to fill the vacant seat on the Board of Education for District One. I remember when I first met Carolyn in April 2016, when she was running for the Student Member of the Board of Education, or SMOB. She altered her speech to use what may have been her only moment at the podium. She didn't know that she was going to win that day, and she still used her five precious minutes to address an emergent issue at North County High School. That could have cost her the election, but she prioritized the greater good of the community over her own campaign. This indicative of the type of leader that I have come to know and value, and a leader that you can expect to show up on the dais. Carolyn is empathetic and mindful. This is exactly what we need on the board right now. During Carolyn's previous tenure on the board, she served not only as a student voice, but a voice for Anarunno County as an at-large member and the only elected member of the board at that time. As appointed, Carolyn will not need time to get adequate with board norms, as she already has the year experience, already doing the job of serving our public schools. The process of becoming the Student Board Member, or SMOB, is a rigorous one. I know this firsthand as a previous finalist last year. Carolyn had to go through interviews and question-answer sessions in front of school system staff and her peers. The race to be SMOB is an extremely competitive field for such a large responsibility. Carolyn held up the race and read a strong campaign that her student peers could easily connect to. Carolyn can use these communication skills to voice the concerns that the constituency of District One has to the board. She has been there for me in the past, and she will be here for the citizens of District One if given the opportunity to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mosher.
Good evening, members of the County Council. My name is Emily Mosher, and I am a resident of District One. I come before you tonight to share my support of applicant Carolyn Williams. I am a graduate of North County High School, and I've lived in District One my entire life. I have seen Carolyn grow from a classmate to a dear friend to an amazing and powerful woman. I've known Carolyn through the many ups and downs that our lives have thrown at us, and one thing about her has remained true, her undeniable passion for helping others in her community. Respectfully, she was made for this position. Carolyn and I ran together for positions on our SGA at Lindale Middle School. We were just two young girls with the same passion at an early age. We campaigned for our positions together by taking blank printer labels and decorating our own stickers to put on lockers and binders. Now, while the things we did during our time on the SGA were small and more direct to our middle school, this is where her passion started to blossom right before my eyes. Since then, we had a few years apart, since she went to Glenberne to participate in the BEMA program, but we never lost our connection or our drive for our passions. We reconnected fully, participating in the Chesapeake Regional Association of Student Councils, and I was right along beside her when she ran for Student Member of the Board and went on to excel in that position. Since then, we have had countless conversations through our college years about a myriad of different things. Being able to open each other's minds to new perspectives is my favorite thing about our relationship, and that is something that she will bring to this board. She has the young adult perspective that has always been so greatly lacking on the school board and is well-prepared for the real issues facing our students, since many of them she has faced herself. She already has the knowledge pertaining to board operations and is well-prepared to hit the ground running to complete those duties. With the adversity that our system is currently facing already so early in the school year, quite frankly, we don't have time to train a new board member. Carolyn has never been one to cave under pressure and will be a relentless advocate for the voices that are often not heard. District One in particular has many students that fall into the gaps that we speak so much of, and Carolyn knows this well because she was one of those students. Now she wants to do for them what the system has done for her. She will listen to our concerns and will ensure that the best decisions are made for all of our students, faculty, and communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would wish to testify? Delegate Rogers, two minutes when you're ready.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Lacy, Vice Chair Radvian, members of the Anarunno County Council. While I was not prepared to come and speak tonight, I'm going to say a couple of words on behalf of Ms. Gloria Dent. And for me, while we have four outstanding candidates, it really comes down to leadership and experience. I've had the opportunity and pleasure to know and work with Gloria in a number of capacities over the past 10 years, and I know that she was the first African-American female to attain the rank of Command Sergeant Major, the highest enlisted rank in the Army, and has fulfilled six combat tours serving this nation. I think that's key because it talks to, earlier there were questions about budget and accountability, and she has the experience and knowledge with working with multimillion-dollar budgets and brings that level of experience to the table. She has a working relationship with the principals, Principal Jefferson and Principal Rivers in the First Councilmatic District or Education District, and I've seen her work with those relationships, creating, building trades opportunities for students at both schools. She's a collaborator and a consensus builder, and she's currently a community activist working at both the county, state, and federal level, advocating not only for education opportunities for students, but also for veterans. I think, well, I know that, and this is pretty hard for me, that she had a very strong relationship with the person who preceded this in this position, Candace Antoine. And I think that she is the right person, the best person, to build on Candace's legacy on the Board of Education and move things forward for our students and our teachers and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Rogers. Anyone else? Seeing no further movement in the audience, the public hearing portion of this meeting is now closed. And we will move on to round two of the interviews. Will the four candidates please return to the table? Deep breath, let it out, it's all good, we won't bite. Just going to ask our second round of questions. Everybody's got theirs in mind. We're going to start again with Ms. Radvian, and I will attempt to rotate through the four of you as I did the first time. Go ahead, Ms. Radvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My second question will relate to the use of science in making decisions about public education. And I'd like you to focus on two different topics under that subheading that are very important to me. The first one is COVID. We have a lot of, we have our local health director, we have experts at Johns Hopkins University, we have the Center for Disease Control, who have made all sorts of findings about the safest way to proceed, based on the information that we have, the safest way to proceed with respect to COVID. So that's part one. The other part is related to healthy school start times. And there is a significant body of research and data indicating that there are all kinds of positive outcomes related to healthy school start times. So, under those two areas, what is your feeling about following science, following the scientific conclusions of research in both the field, you know, the sort of the health field? Well, actually, health is really in both areas. So I would love to hear your thoughts on how you value following science.
Ms. Williams.
So, I'll start regarding COVID-19. I know that, excuse me, there's science that supports getting vaccinated, wearing the mask. I'm aware that there's no vaccine that's approved yet for the young children. That may be something that will come in the future. So that's definitely something that this board, in conjunction with the superintendent and the county, need to take into consideration to figure out what that's going to look like. And for our employees and staff who work in the county, I think that it's very important that we communicate with our collective bargaining units to see what the best procedure would be following the data that we have with the science on moving forward with that. So that's what I'll say in reference to COVID-19. And I support us wearing the mask in school. We need to get our students back into school safely, and if right now the safest way to do that is through wearing the mask, then let's mask up. In regards to start times, I know that the current board has made it clear that they do intend on changing the start times for our students and with the support of the science that bats that. So for me, my biggest thing would be to make sure that I inform my community on what pushing those start times back would do, how they can be prepared for it and ready to implement that for their students. Thank you.
Ms. Ma.
As a classically trained scientist, I absolutely support science, support the science. Having said that, I understand, especially with regard to COVID-19, or I think COVID-19 highlights sort of a lack of understanding of science, perhaps, or of poor messaging from the scientific community. So I think that it is incumbent upon the decision-makers, be it the school board or the county council or the policymakers, to ensure that there is a well-sourced, well-backed discussion to educate the populace about the science and to educate them why the decision is being made. So for instance, I have recently downloaded a bunch of papers on ivermectin to try to understand why it is that people really want to take ivermectin, and that's a whole other discussion that I'd be happy to have with people. But I think that it's worth it to have discussions with people who are, who don't necessarily buy into science, to explain the science, show them the data, and have the discussion.
I happen to take a, oops. I don't, I happen to take a flight today from Indianapolis coming here, and in relation to your question, one thing is, no matter how much I may disagree with the pilot, I certainly don't hope that the plane goes down. As regards to science, I don't know all of it, but I rely on those who do. I have a brother who's been an anesthesiologist at Johns Hopkins for 31 years, now he's Vice President of a hospital out in the Midwest, but I listen to them. And the one thing that I have heard more often than not is, "Well, this vaccine has not been tested yet, and why do we need to wear the masks?" The only thing I look at is the statistics that suggest that those who are not vaccinated seem to be dying at a far greater rate than those who have been, to the degree about 98%. And the second piece is, you know, why not wear a mask? I believe in those who are the decisions makers- I, I believe in those who are the decisions-makers as relates to what it is that we need to do. There was a time in our history in Tuskegee, Alabama, where some things happened. Well, could those things happen again? I think we're far, far beyond that. I like to think that we can trust those who are in leadership, and I affirm the decisions that are being made. As relates to start times, the only thing that I can think of is that I don't ever remember having to walk to school or go to school when it was dark and come home when it was dark. I am desperately hoping that something happens that, that doesn't happen to our kids. I, I would love to see them get a good night's rest. It's incumbent upon parents to make sure that they get to sleep on time. But notwithstanding that, you know, when it's time to go to school, you go, and when it's time to come home, you come home, but my goodness, they should, I don't believe it should be in the dark. I don't think that's the best answer for anyone. Thank you.
Ms. Dent.
So do I trust the science? The answer is unequivocally yes. March 16th was the day that the United States stood still, but the coming of COVID started in December. And so when you have as many nations as we have that have put their scientific hats on and they came up with a vaccine that I truly believe has shifted the death toll in our country and countries around the world, I have no doubt that the science is there. Also, when it comes to COVID-19 and the vaccine, as I share with you all, I'm military, so there's probably never been a vaccine that I'm concerned about. So that, that is a personal choice. But being concerned as a person and then being concerned as a parent is entirely different. So you do need to rely on the science. I think the science is very important, and I think a lot of work and energy has been put into the science, as it should be, for not only the vaccine, but how do we control the impacts and the effects of the COVID-19 variant and the different variants that's coming? So it does need to be well thought out, and we do need to rely on scientific data. The healthy school start times is interesting only because I believe that children are adaptable. They do have a tendency to be a lot more resilient than we think they are. Just like a child or baby coming into this world, we rely on our parents to make good decisions about how the child is being reared. We also rely on our scientists, our educators, and all the people that are stakeholders into understanding what goes into. So it is well thought out for someone to say start times and when do we start those times. So I do believe in the science, and I'm okay with using scientific data to make both decisions.
Thank you all. Next, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Ms. Ma, you mentioned echo chambers in your opening statement, and I think when you're in public service, everybody, actually, really, everybody, probably everywhere, has an echo chamber of sorts, and it's really important to be cognizant of that. Particularly in public service, you will hear from folks who may think similarly to you on a particular issue, and you may hear from folks who, who don't think similarly to you. But sometimes you might not hear from someone if they think like you or differently, right? You, you just don't know. So I'm curious to know whether it's with social media or via email, or I know people have mentioned newsletters before and things like that. How is it you see your role in making sure that you're hearing from everyone and really making an effort to get out of your echo chamber and, and reach all of the members of your community?
Ms. Dent.
Oh, thank you. The solution for me is, has to be well thought out, reaching people in the community as well as ensuring that I understand the needs and the concerns of the community. I love town halls because it gives you an opportunity for you to take on some hard questions, but they're also opportunities for people to ask the question that they don't know, know the answer to. Using social media platforms are definite, but I'm a grassroots kind of person. I believe that if you really want to be effective, you have to get out and into the communities to find out what are the needs of the community. When I was looking at the handbook, it can, it really give you a very minimal standard on what a board member should do when it comes to participating in events. For me, I think that needs to be strengthened. So for, for getting out into the community, getting them involved into the learning process, the school process, will be, to me, the worst, the step in the right direction. The other one is leveraging the PTSA. Our PTA and PTSA committees working together would not only be able to educate the parents but also educate everyone that is impacted by the decisions that the board makes as well as things that are happening in the school. So for me, communication is one thing that I think is very important, and I really want to figure out how to do it in the masses, but outside of the areas, the four areas I just gave you, I really don't know of anything that I would be more definitive other than to wait and see.
Mr. Martin.
For myself, it's been my experience, having served as a mediator with the National Guard, mediated 216 disputes, all but eight of those negotiated settlement agreements. Those are documented. It was a 95% chance that if I were called in to mediate a dispute, that there would be a settlement. That could never happen based on my talents alone. The first question I had to ask the participants is, are you willing to mediate in good faith? Do you want to settle? Do you want to resolve? I remember there was an advertisement that came on decades ago, you know, friends don't let friends drive drunk. The one thing that I recognize is arguing with a drunk is futile. It's not going to result in anything that's, that's positive or productive. The other thing is, I just want to hear, but more than hear, because I believe hearing is a physical skill, I believe listening is a mental skill, but intentional listening, listening not waiting to respond, but listening to hear, what is it that truly moves you? And if you're moved in such a direction, whether it's for my position or perhaps a position that serves against mine, I really want to know, what is it that you see that I don't see? And that's the thing that has served me best, and I should say that's the thing that has served me second best. The thing that has served me best and most, and I will never be ashamed to say it, is I have a deep and abiding faith in my Lord, and I call upon Him at times when I don't know which way to turn and I'm not sure which way to go. And it has never been my experience that that has failed me. So I hope I stayed on track in answering the question completely. Thank you.
Ms. Ma.
Yeah, so, so regarding echo chambers, that is a really, really good question. I put a lot of thought into it. So having been, having spent a good deal of time very active with our HOA, one thing that I discovered was that, was that in, people tend to only show up at HOA meetings when they're really angry. So you, you tend to always hear the angriest voices on, on any issue. And those by far are not going to be the, the majority view. And so I think it is incumbent upon those who are making the decisions to listen and lower the volume so that other voices can be heard, but also so that you can find those areas where, people, people don't come to meetings unless they actually care. They, they're, they don't, they don't misrepresent themselves. So you, you have to find the common ground between, when, when you have people who are, who are of good faith but, but cannot seem to find common ground, it is incumbent upon our leaders to try to find a way to move forward by, you know, maybe we can't agree on the biggest things, but we can all agree that we want this nation to succeed. We can all agree that we want better roads, we want better schools, we want, we don't want things to fall apart. And so how can we, we don't, what, what things can we work together to accomplish?
Ms. Williams.
So, to be short, I would make myself available, whether that be through social media, that's one of the benefits of social media, is being able to connect with our community in that way, or getting out in the community, feet on the ground, in their faces, and really being in connection with my constituency. One of the ways that I'm hoping I can encourage them to speak out on what it is that they're going through is honestly being here today and sharing with you all a part of my story and my struggles and how it has not been easy for me, but I've been fortunate enough to be surrounded by wonderful people, but I'm aware of the fact that there are still certain things that need to be changed, and that's why I'm here. So I'm hoping that through me sharing my story with you all tonight as well, there are people in District One who will come out and will say, hey, I kind of went through the same thing. I experienced a little bit of the same thing that Ms. Williams went through. This is something that I see in my community that needs to be changed. So in the immediate, I'm hoping that just by me being here and sharing, it encourages people in District One to open themselves up some more and connect. So thank you.
Thank you all. Ms. Pickard, your turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, issues of diversity, inclusion, and equity have been top priorities of the school system and, to be honest, the county of late. I'm wanting to hear from each of you if you think the school system is on the right track, and I'd like you to explain a little bit of your answer for me. Thank you.
Ms. Ma.
I'll start by saying that I'm the least qualified person to answer that question. I, you know, so, so in my neighborhood, I think, I think that the, the, one of, one of the things that, that brought me, that stimulated me to apply for this is that my neighborhood started off as a, as a very tight-knit neighborhood, and once, and it, we are, we are a minority-minority neighborhood. And, and it was very, it's a, it's a very, it was a very strong neighborhood, and then what happened was that once, once our kids reached a certain age, their parents would all move away. And so I, I don't know if that's due to diversity issues or if that's due to school quality issues. I know that there are issues that concerned them with regard to the opportunities that were being afforded to their, to their kids. And so I think that I would start by trying to identify if those are the, if, if, if it's equity issues, is it, is it that South, South County is getting better, more resources than North County? Is it that our students are more military and therefore, therefore less settled in their education system? I don't know. Those would be, those would be things that, that I would have to understand.
Ms. Williams.
So I would say that there are programs and things in place that the school, excuse me, that the school system has, such as the free and reduced meals program that they offer to students. I think that that is a sign of equity. I would like to give you my definition, if that's all right, for what I have for equality and equity. For equity, it is the understanding the needs of each individual community, each person, and catering to those needs. So I say the free and reduced meals program because you are going in, understanding the needs that that specific student may have, and handling that. Equality is understanding the needs, oh, excuse me, equality is providing general resources, understanding and opportunity for all, such as our magnet programs. So I do think that there are things in place that the school board, the county does have that is addressing these needs, but as always, there's more that can be done, and I'm hoping to work with my fellow board members, with the county, to figure out what those things are and addressing them. Thank you.
Ms. Dent.
The answer to your question is, it depends. So from the diversity, inclusion, equity and inclusion, so far, the last two years has been a top priority. If you do the right thing all the time, if you rely on teaching all history instead of a selective history, if you look at a person the way we're supposed to constitutionally, regardless of the color of their skin, race, creed, or origin, then there's no need for the program. But we know better. We know that that's not what's happening. The answer to your question is, is the county and school moving in the right direction? I think absolutely they're moving in the right direction. Is there work to be done? Absolutely. There's much work to be done. And I think that there is a responsibility for anyone in an elected position or in a board position, for them to always leave that paramount. In the military, we do something, what we call every single month, is recognition of a observance of people's history. That's important, and I think that's the kind of level that you have to invoke into school systems, so they have respect for all. So yes, I believe the county is moving in the right direction, but I do wholeheartedly know that there's a lot of work to be done.
Mr. Martin.
Yes, I do believe that the county is moving in the right direction. I, I believe also that the, the county moves like the nation moves. I believe that we live in a nation where, and it's not, doesn't matter what I believe, what I know to be true, is that when laws are passed, that's when things happen. And I, I, you know, what we do in Anaronda County, as I substitute teach in Rundle and Mead Middle, MacArthur Middle, Mead High, equity across the board, absolutely. I don't witness discrimination to any degree based on someone's color, sex, race, national origin, age, religion, disability, genetic disorder, or LGBTQ AI. I don't see it. I don't see it coming from teachers, I don't see it coming from administrators. Does it exist? Absolutely. Do we all have some degree of, should I say racism in us? I believe that we do. But the reality is, when the questions asked, is the county moving in the right direction? I'd say, yeah, I, I like what I see in Anaronda County. And I believe that it's incumbent upon each of us to do something more than just wait on an institution to do something. So this year, sorry, last school year at MacArthur, I told, they said the highest failure rates they have are in Still Meadows in Mead Village. I went over and spoke with Mr. Mungo. Mr. Mungo's given us a six, I'm sorry, a six-bedroom apartment, and what we're doing in there this year is, it's the MacArthur Annex. And what are we doing in there? We're going in and showing them, hey, look, guys, we're not just talking it, we're living it. We're going to have a place for you to come. You want to study? Study. You want to hang out for a while? Hang out for a while. Parents, we want you to know that we are here. But yeah, in short, I think we're doing a, we're doing a really good job. I hope that we continue to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to give some background on my question before I ask it, so hopefully it'll make some sense. In March of this year, this council passed Resolution 18-21, which ratified the Anaronda County Public School Systems' joint initiative to eliminate the opportunity gap. Everyone on the council voted for it except for me because I wasn't there that night. In that document, there were a series of statements, and I'm going to read two of them to you. One was to continue professional development focused on culturally responsive teaching, implicit bias, anti-racism, anti-oppressive behaviors towards students, and relationship development with students and families. The next was to build capacity of teachers and administrators to be able to discuss and facilitate discussions on racism and other oppressions and privilege. According to the Anaronda County Public Schools website, in the Equity and Social Justice Office, when they talk about what does it mean to be anti-racist, they say being anti-racist means one who is actively working against racism. It's making a commitment to resist, to resisting unjust laws, policies, and racist attitudes. Anti-racism is how we get free from centuries of living in a racialized society that keeps us separated and oppressed. It is not our words that matter as much as our actions. And then when we look at another portion of the AACPS website... our actions. And then when we look at another portion of the AACPS website, it indicates that the public school systems are committed to taking an anti-biased and anti-racist action to make all of our students feel safe and valued. Reading an excerpt from the book, How to Be an Anti-Racist, that was published by Ibram X. Kendi, he notes, "The only remedy to racist discrimination is anti-racist discrimination. The only remedy to past discrimination is present discrimination. The only remedy to present discrimination is future discrimination." So my question is, do you agree with the idea that to be anti-racist means that there needs to be some form of discrimination to rectify past discrimination? And if the answer to that question is yes, how do you intend to implement that vision in the public school system?
Mr. Martin.
It is my firm belief that two wrongs never make a right. To counter unlawful discrimination with unlawful discrimination, I don't see the fruit in it. To counter discrimination in the past by discriminating lawfully in the now, well, lawful discrimination is okay. I want to go to lunch with one friend for my own reasons. Is that unlawful? I get that. But when I want to go to lunch with one friend and exclude others based on a discriminatory practice that the EEOC says, hey, we can't do that, that's just wrong. I want to state to the, the heart of your question, though, is, does one form of discrimi, or discriminating now do something to counter discrimination in the past? No. I think it takes more than anything else. I have to say this, too. I'm watching my time. For the National Guard, I served as the Complaints Manager for the entire National Guard. I served for, as a State Equal Employment Manager for some 10 years. And one thing I got to do regularly is watch this. And the one thing that we wanted everyone to know is, look, when you have issues of discrimination, those issues are not against people. There are people who perform acts, but these issues that you're talking about are against agencies. The question is, does the agency take the immediate and appropriate action when they first recognize that some form of discrimination has taken place? That's the proactive action that needs to be taken. Any form of discrimination to counter past discrimination, I would not be in support of it. I would be in support of those who know the laws, understand the laws, comply with the laws, enforce the laws, and perpetrate those thoughts to others. Thank you.
Ms. Dent.
Very good question, and I appreciate you not only giving the background, but the connotation on why it's there, because I different thought, I had a different train of thought, so thank you for the explanation. So, one, I appreciate the board taking the stance that it did about how do we educate not only our students, but the place where it should be, education. The only way for us to change is for us to understand, and the only way for us to understand is for us to educate. And we have to keep that cycle. That's how we overcome things that we don't do from the 1800s to where we're now into the 21st century, to where not only do we have one man going to the moon, we got rich billionaires going to the moon. So, this education is important. Do you need one racist, I think that was your question, do you believe that racism of the behavior changes the racism of the past, or the racist behavior of the past? The answer is no. That's, that's not how we educate. So, inequivalently, no, we don't need that. The other side of that is, is that the commitment that was, and pledge that was made to make sure that we have the right amount of academia put before anyone that's going to teach about this behavior, discriminations, injustices, social justices, that all has to be put into perspective. I, for one, believe that it's great to make the commitment, but I don't think that we're at a position, not only not here in Anaronda County, but within this country, to really have the educators that have put the well thought, that they will, but I don't think the time is now. I think we got to be very smart about the way we do it, because we could rewrite history in a way that we're not all looking for. So I do believe there's a lot of thought and a lot of work has to be done on that subject.
Ms. Williams.
Further discrimination does not end past discrimination, but I do strongly believe that it is important for us to teach the full scope of history, to have a well-rounded understanding of what transpired before us, how it has shaped where we are now, where we went wrong, what things we did well, the people who made it happen, and how we can be better in the future. So I will end with also saying further discrimination does not change or end past discrimination.
Ms. Ma.
So, I sort of, I sort of can argue on both sides in this, not, not because, not because I'm decided on this, but does racism exist? Yes. Has racism affected how people, people's outcomes in the past and into, into the present? Absolutely. Having said that, I was a, I was a paramedic when I was younger, and, and, you know, there was always an issue of whether or not women should be firefighters. And, and listening to my coworkers, the, the, you know, at the time, they would, they would change what's called the Phoenix Test, which was a physical test of, of the firefighters. For women, they would make it, they would make it less, that they didn't have to do, they didn't have to carry as much weight and things. And it caused a lot of resentment. And, and so I think that, that anti-racism, by your definition, would, would, would have a hugely damaging effect of, of, on society. Having said that, with AI and making, making, so, so I don't know, I don't really have time to go into how AI perpetuates past problems, you probably already know this, but there are, there are past trends that, that need to be, that absolutely shouldn't be codified, but need to be recognized. And there are, there are, the Google, Google actually calls it an implicit filter. You know, and, and those things are driving social media, what we, what we encounter and, and the things that affect our thought. And those things need to be dealt with in a very conscious and deliberate manner as we go forward.
Thank you all. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll get right to the point. One of your jobs that you're going to face whoever's chosen is redistricting, and I want to know what background and information you have in regards to the process, and how you will view how that will work, because frequently, and I'll just make this statement, and I'm sure my council members will agree with me, we frequently get frustrated while there isn't redistricting, and of course, there's going to be a big one coming up with these new schools being built and, and places as mentioned earlier. So if you could address that, your, basically, your knowledge, your background, and then how are you going to deal with the process? Thank you.
Checked my cheat sheet, and it's Ms. Williams' turn.
During my previous time on the board, redistricting did come up. So I do have some experience with redistricting, and I do know that with the new-old mill construction, it will impact at least six or seven clusters, including the clusters that are within District One. So, the important thing, I believe, when looking at redistricting is to see how exactly we can alleviate overcrowding, and how to best utilize the taxpayer dollars to alleviate that, whether that be through modernization, renovation, new construction of different schools. How is it that we can best use the taxpayer dollars to alleviate the overcrowding in our schools and best serve our community and our district? So I hope that answered your question, Councilman.
Ms. Ma.
The short answer is I have no experience with redistricting. Having said that, I, I, I've read a lot about the geography, or, I'm sorry, geometry of, of redistricting in political districts. And I think, I think what I would, if, if selected, what I would do is I would start by trying to understand what was done in the past, and the, and the motivations for why, why the districts, the lines were drawn in their, in their particular way. I know that when I was very active in the community, in my community, there, there was the, a recognition that there would have to be new schools built in, in North County, just based on, just based on the number of people that were moving in. So I know that, that there has been a need for a very long time, and, and I'm looking forward to seeing how we can work together to fix it.
Mr. Martin.
Thank you for the question. I, I will say, when I learned to play bridge, the number-one rule they taught us was lose your losers first. This is a loser for me. I have no experience in redistricting. When I was in the National Guard for 28 years, I was the Visual Information Manager of the Year in 1996. I didn't know how to take pictures when I first went into that job. When they picked me to be the Equal Employment Opportunity Manager for the District of Columbia, the only thing I knew about EO and EEO was that one had three letters and one had two. Well, blacks in government awarded me for being such a staunch advocate in that field. I won't go into the particulars. I guess I just want to say this, that if I understood the question, if you're looking for somebody who can hit the ground running in this capacity, I am not that person, and I want to be fair to all the other applicants. I want to be fair to the people of Anaronda County. I'm not your guy. If you're looking for somebody who comes on and knows how to be a part of the team, knows how to study, knows how to present and prepare himself to the level that he will not only participate, but be in a position to lead, that's what I do well. Thank you for the question.
Ms. Dent.
So my experience with redistricting is very personal. My daughter was impacted with redistricting at Fort Hood not once but twice. In 1996, I bought a house solely because of a school that I wanted her to go to, made sure I was in that area. And going into her sixth grade, we, the community, of course, was redistrict, and of course, that meant she had to go to another school. A school that I spent probably two years trying to make sure I found the right location, just so that she would not end up in that school. The good news is she did end up in the school. The bad news was, is that I was so far wrong. I was wrong about the school and wrong about her learning experience in the school. So, from that perspective, I had to learn that there's a lot of thought goes into the redistricting process, but there's also the passion that is at every school that's going to come regardless to what school she went to. From that, so that's, that's my experience from a personal note. Professionally, my redistricting is more on the political side and dealing with how, where the votes add up at. I do think that as we are getting ready to look at where, how the redistricting lines are being drawn, once again, going back to what I said earlier, that's a mental health that goes along with that. I can tell you that just for being a parent, I was so drawn out and thrown by the fact that my daughter was going to change until I was willing to cross a whole lot of blurred lines, to get her an address, to put her where I needed her to be. But because of my moral ethics, I decided that I would base, do, do the right thing and send her to the school that she belonged to, and I don't regret the decision. So, I say that to say to any parent that not only do I understand their concern, but I also think that there's a process to where we can rely on the educators within that school. And if there's a shortfall in that school, then we have to do what we need to do to bring it back up to standard.
Thank you all. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the mental health of our students has been a conversation in recent years, K through 12. This council passed a resolution declaring suicide as a health crisis, and we listened to a mom share a story of her middle-school-aged son in our county who took his own life and died by suicide. So my question is, is to you, what is, in your opinion, the role of the School Board in supporting mental health for students, and how would you like to see that area of well-being for our students moving forward?
Ms. Dent.
So if I haven't said it already, I'm a big proponent of mental health. I'll only say it one more time. So, if I am selected, I can assure the Board of Education and to my other board members that we would definitely have a conversation about mental health. It's very important. Children go through a lot. They deal with a lot. The average parent, statistically, and I know you'll appreciate this, Ms. Scientist, spends less than two hours a day with their children, while the educators spend eight hours a day and so forth. So, in doing that, there's a lot on a child's mind. Then they have the couple of the social media, the cyberbullying, the, just all these other factions, the haves and the have-nots, the social injustices, all these factors. So for me, mental health is very important, and I do think it's important that the board puts some emphasis on understanding how mental health and having the right amount of mental health per student is important, so that it's not overwhelming not only to the child, but to the mental health counselor, because that's important as well. So the ratio has to be thought out.
Mr. Martin.
As relates to mental health, that's like super gigantic, critically important. And what do we do going forward? I know one of the things that is most important is, students want to, they want to know that they matter. They want to know that they're being heard. They don't want answers all the time. And I, I think sometimes, especially as men, and I'll overgeneralize with this probably, we always want to provide an answer. We always want to tell you what the right fix is. I have two kids, 45 and 42. I have two grandkids, 24 and 14. I have two great-grandchildren, six and four. Not the great-grandkids yet, but the one thing that I have learned is that they don't always want to know what's right. They just want you to listen. And in our schools, the one thing in listening that I believe will propel us forward is, in that listening process, when you hear something or see something that may be a trigger, don't be the Lone Ranger, and don't be the one with the Superman cape thinking you can fix it with your clever answers because you know more than the student does. There are trained professionals that we have, and at every opportunity, let's make sure that we get that young man or that young woman to the place that they need to be to receive the help that they need. Above everything else, if we can just dismiss ourselves from the equation, understanding that the most important thing is the health of this student, I think, I think, that's a great, great place to start with any of them. And I will say this, too. The one thing that I desperately hope stops happening is having conversations in front of students when you don't know where that student lives, and you say something that could be so damaging to their psyche.
Ms. Ma.
So many things relate back to the internet. So, my answer would, my answer, my answer to what, what is the role of the School Board in mental health issues would be, you know, sort of, my, my, my perception of the School Board is that school, the School Board is the body that sets the policy. We're not the boots-on-the-ground with the student who is, who is the, we're, the teacher is the one who's going to be the one noticing if there's a problem with the student, and the one who's the most, who's the one that we need to empower to do something. It is the role of the board to identify the broad issues that the students face and enable the proper remedies for them, whether that be, whether that be empowering the, the teachers to, to do what they need to do for the students, setting the right times for them to be coming to school or not. You know, I don't know, I don't know the degree to which a School Board can tell, tell a student to like put down their electronics, but, you know, that would be great. So, so I think, I think that, that it is, it is the job of the School Board to, to try to identify sort of the meta-issues that the students are facing that are, that are driving them, and to try to set them, to try to create a healthy environment for them to learn.
Ms. Williams.
So coming back in person after-
So coming back in person after going through this pandemic has been rough on everyone. And mental health has always been a concern, but even more now, it's a big concern and a large priority for me. As someone who suffers from mental health when I was in school, I was, I felt like I wasn't able to go and speak with my school counselors or psychologists, and not because they weren't fantastic, but because I felt the lack of their presence because of the number of students that were in our school. So I believe that there is a need for more school counselors, school psychologists, social workers, and the list goes on. And I look forward to working with my fellow board members, the county council, to figure out how we can provide this in the budget and the funding for it, because it's necessary. I wish that I had the opportunity to go and speak with my counselors sooner, to get a better understanding of the mental health issues that I suffer from. But I was able to get help, I would like to say that, and I'm doing really well now. And I know that there are fantastic people working in our system already, but they also need some help and our students need help too. So I look forward to working with the board and the county council to try to find somewhere in the budget to increase that. Thank you.
Thank you all. And it is my turn. And this time, instead of a warm fuzzy softball, I have more of a hardball. The core question of have you counted the cost of holding this position on the Board of Education? Do you have the time? Have you soberly looked at how much time is required? And can you commit to dedicating that time? Do you have the energy to do it? Do you have the energy for late meetings or to work with your colleagues on alternate solutions? So maybe such late meetings aren't required. I personally am not a fan. Do you have the tenacity to pursue your, your point of view through all those details that you're going to have to go through? And then how do you accept what if you don't get what you want? Putting all that together, to me, that's a core issue of how are you going to handle being on the board? And Ms. Williams, you're first.
I would like to start off by saying that I've been here before. Having to juggle being a board member with being a student, with applying for college, with the personal things that I was still experiencing while I was on the board, I never felt like it ever took away from my job, from me serving the students, parents, faculty, and staff in this county. And I don't see that changing. I'm fresh out of college. I have a lot of time on my hands right now. I'm back home in a community that I love, in a community that I'm ready to serve. And I've been to the long meetings. I've been to the short meetings. I've been to the after meetings. I've, I've, I've done it all and I'm ready to do it again. If I'm not selected to get it, that's perfectly fine. I'm still a resident of District One. Like I said, District One is home. This county is home. And I'm still going to fight, support, advocate. I've never been one to shy away from speaking my mind and sharing my opinion and advocating for those who have not been able to advocate for themselves. So I can promise each and every one of you, if I am not selected tonight, this will not be the last time that you see me. Carolyn Williams is back and she's ready to work. Thank you.
Ms. Ma.
The reason why I applied is because, because I think that, well, so, so I should, I should start by saying, I, I am, as an academic, I am a lifelong learner, as we all are. But I, I, I applied because I am very interested in understanding why it is that graduates of not necessarily the Anarondale County K through 12 system, but the K through 12 system in the United States are, seem to be lacking in some of the, some of the, the key pieces of education that I think they, they need and to try to find solutions. And so I view, I view applying for this position as, as an opportunity for me to learn what problems it is that, that students face, what problems it is that teachers face, what problems it is that school districts face, and to try to find solutions that will actually work to create, so, so that, so that our, our students graduate with the education that they need in order to face the opportunities that they're going to have to, the opportunities that they're going to be facing in the future. So do I have the energy for it? Yes. Will I, will I spend the time to, to do the job? Yes. Because I need to learn what the problems are in order to be able to come up with the solutions. So yes, absolutely.
Mr. Martin.
There's an old Baptist preacher died a few years ago, J. Vernon McGee. And he tells this story. He said, "I have my deacons. And I tell my deacons, if we have a deacons meeting here at six o'clock, you need to be here. And if your little boy's got a T-ball game at six o'clock, you be here so I can tell you, brother, you had the wrong meeting." I say that to say this. Tonight at 6:45, I'm a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee. We had a meeting tonight. I had a responsibility. And I found out about this meeting about eight minutes after six. Decision had to be made. I knew the place to be. You see, I have a niece who said, "Uncle Chris, there's a position on the CAC and I think you should apply for it." There's no one here to speak for me tonight. I got a bunch of people who will. But I speak well for myself. I just want to say this. I applied for this position on the CAC. Why? Because I want to make a difference in District One. Because I went to school, in elementary school on Fort Meade, middle school, Corcoran, finished at MacArthur, graduated from Arundel, been a substitute teacher at the school. Grew up on Fort Meade. Bottom line is, I got something I want to do. Do I have the energy? I've worked for the, since I've retired from the military, four and a half years as a youth pastor, and then I left that job to become a missionary with Youth for Christ. And with that job right now, I give it everything I have. I never scold down. Work with a nonprofit, with young people, people who've been incarcerated, can't get jobs. I got five seconds. But I can tell you the rest of the story perhaps another time. But yeah, I have the energy.
Ms. Dent.
So your question is, have I counted up the cost? Do I have the energy or tenacity, which is a really good word? And the answer to all of the questions are, I don't make any decision without it being well thought, thought out. I don't make any decision without my family. We are a military family and everything that we do, we sit down and talk about it, analyze, do you really have the capacity to do it? Not only do I have the capacity, but I have the passion. This is not something that I'm doing for any other reason other than I want to dedicate myself not only to the children of our future, but to know that our future here in Anarondale County can look bleak if it want to, but it won't be because of the children and the lack of education that the children have. The second reason why we had to sit down and talk about this is because of Candace. Candace was a great friend of mine and it was very heart-wrenching to just find out on Saturday morning that she decided to go and be with her heavenly body. But one thing I remember Joey saying, as soon as I asked him, "Are you okay?" He said, and it just really was weird, "Who's going to replace my mom?" And I said, "Don't worry about that. Don't spend any time on that." And he said, "I wish it would be someone like you that care about kids, that care about the future of children." And I told him that, "Let me talk to my husband and let me think about that." And it didn't take much for me to think about it, but it did take me to really evaluate, do I have the time? And so I would not have applied if I didn't have the time, commitment, tenacity, or energy to do it. So I say yes, I have all of the above.
Thank you all. That concludes our second round of interviews. The next step in our process are our closing statements from our candidates. So I think in the beginning, we started out with Ms. Williams and we went down the table that way. So we'll start with Ms. Dent and we'll work our way back. And I believe you have up to two minutes per, per person. Ms. Dent.
So members of the board, thank you very much this afternoon. The different council matters that you represented here today represents schools all across this county. The one thing that we all have in common is, is that we were all children and we were all educated, because this is why you are where you are right now. The students here deserve nothing less. Actually, they deserve much better education, much better opportunities. We're in a digital world, and in the digital world, it's going to take a whole lot more than mom's apple pie to make things right. It's going to take a lot of outside vices in order to make your child as efficient and effective as we want them to be, so they can compete in the environment of the future. Our technology has taken over our mindset and the idea of putting down the technology is probably never going to happen. So with that, I want to tell the board and members and families that I'm a family first. I'm a blended family, but I will tell you that my stepchildren would probably slap me right now if they heard me say stepchildren. I received a text from my son on Mother's Day that said, "I'm very fortunate that not only did the Lord give me one mom, he gave me two." And I say that because that was important to me, to let him know that I'm not going to replace your mother. I never wanted to. As a matter of fact, I love your mother just as much as you do. But you will always, and she will always have a home in our home. Because kids don't ask to be here. We brought them into this world and we owe it to them, to give them exactly what we were given, the right nourishment, the right education. So I'm committed to doing that. And I'm committed to doing it for my children and every child within this county.
Mr. Martin.
One thing I love about these United States is that we adapt, we move, we change. You know, we have the framers and they have this document called the Constitution, the law of our land. And you know, the thing about the Constitution is, yeah, it was targeted toward a select group of people, but that's what it was at the time. What I love most about it is that they were wise enough to know that we need to have an avenue of redress in the event we didn't get it all right. And I think some 27 times, we've executed that by amendments. Was it right? Was it wrong? I think it was effective. And I think as we grew and these amendments came to pass, the same thing happened. One thing I love about this, and thank you all just for the opportunity, just to sit here, just to sit with these folks, is I sit here and I look at this panel of candidates and I say, "Look at the diversity, look at the demographics." And very respectfully, I look at the panel in front of me and I don't see the same thing. I don't have any heartache with that. What I'm suggesting is that, just like those amendments, what I want to do is make sure that we infuse in these students that, don't keep your eyes focused simply on what you see in front of you. Look at what could be, not only what could be, look at what can be, but you have to be the one who wants to make the difference. And it starts with you. And you know, the, the, the shaming and the name blaming and all that, all that's got to stop. It starts with you. You want to make a difference? Get your education. How'd you say, those electronics? Yeah, put them down. There's a time for it. I read a 102-page report, I can't remember the name of it, but I read it. And I saw all the things that I'm interested and excited in in there. And I saw in there that it was sort of vetoed because of the COVID right now, but I think this county isn't a good place and I would like to be there to help to make it even better.
Ms. Ma.
So I will say once again that I am the least qualified candidate on this panel. If selected, I promise I will, I will do my very best to learn as fast as I can. I, I think that you guys have a hard decision. My, I will continue to try to engage, whether selected or not, to try to understand K through 12, to try to understand the issues that are faced by our students and that are faced by our teachers, to try to find creative solutions, because I think that it's not a matter of luxury, it's a matter of necessity. I think that, that our students are, are, are facing a world where they, we need to innovate and change and find the right solution to help them face the obstacles that they're going to be facing. And I could go on about that, but, but so, so I think that, that, you know, I, I, I'm very happy that you, you guys have a panel of, of highly qualified people to choose from. If I'm not selected, I will look forward to engaging you in other ways to try to help solve the problems that need to be solved.
Ms. Williams.
Council members, if you look at where I came from and all that I've been through, you wouldn't think I would be here right now. There are a few reasons that I can proudly sit in front of you today. One, my family. I was raised by strong, resilient, empathetic, and dedicated women and men. No matter what obstacle was thrown their way, they kept pushing. They knew when to stand firm and when to ask for help. Two, the wonderful teachers, faculty, and staff that encouraged me inside and outside of the school building. There are many more than this, but I have to thank a few. Thank you, Ms. DeJesu, Ms. Staveley, Ms. Brown, Ms. Golden, and Ms. Poison. Thank you for going above and beyond and inspiring me to pursue my dreams. Three, the friendships and relationships I have built along the way. Going to school in Anarondale County provided me the opportunity to meet the next generation of changemakers. Most of my friends have now become my family and we have laughed, cried, pursued justice, and the list could go on together. I want to help others experience what I was so fortunate to have. I want our students, faculty, and staff to know that they can do anything they put their minds to and that every step of the way, they are supported. I want the entire county to see the magic that is in District One. I'm forever grateful for Anarondale County and District One, and it's been an honor to sit in front of you all tonight and thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you all. Let's give all our candidates a round of applause. Thank you so much. And I'll say, as the council member for District One, I do get a vote, but I kind of wish there are four votes out on my right and left, because I don't really want to have to choose from amongst four members of the district that I represent. And yet, that is what I have to do. So no hard feelings to the person, to the people not selected. I'm deeply, deeply grateful that the four of you applied and I think you've all been fabulous candidates. So thank you very much. You certainly have given us a lot to think about. And at this time, we, we can have council discussion. We could also, we talked about taking a recess to allow everyone to collect their thoughts and then come back and have discussion and voting. Given that it's only 8:09, good for us. We have a few options. So if someone would like to take a recess, please make a motion. Otherwise, we'll go into discussion.
I'd like to make a motion for 10 minutes. Do we have?
There's a motion to take a recess for 10 minutes. It's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the county council will recess for 10 minutes and reconvene at 8:20. My colleagues were much more on time when we were meeting virtually. I think something about meeting in person is extending the recess. But we do have a quorum. The first thing we were going to do, I was going to ask my colleagues if any of them have a final question for any of our candidates. And I don't think any of the ones who are here at the table do. Oh, good. We don't use tardy slips, but maybe we should, just for this special meeting. Okay, does anyone have a final question for the candidates? Ms. Radveen?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to proceed with one more round of questions.
And in that round of questions, same as we've done before, any council member may ask a question or pass if they wish?
Yeah.
All right, well, that's as a motion to do a third round, as we just discussed. Is there a second?
Second, Hare.
Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll on the motion to hold a third round?
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler? Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
That's four in the affirmative, three in the negative. The motion to ask another round of questions has been adopted.
Ms. Radveen?
All right, and I get to jump in and go first. Let me just pause for a moment to formulate my question, formulate my words. In my mind, one of the important roles of the Board of Education is accountability. One of the biggest issues in my district, District 6, even though you'd be representing District 1, your votes impact all six districts. Excuse me, seven. I don't know who I left out there. All seven districts. And a lot of things related to equity are very important in my district. How, in what ways do you envision holding our school leadership accountable for the things that impact equity? What steps would you take from the beginning to the end?
Mr. Martin?
Thank you for the question, as I'm listening to it. Holding individual schools in District 1 accountable, my belief is that it always starts at the top, and that is whether it's Dr. Rivers or Mr. Whiting, having the conversation. And when equity is, when there's something, when there is inequity that is determined, you have to be bold enough, and you have to be honest enough with yourself, I have to be honest enough with myself, to simply go to them and say, "This is what I see." And it's been my experience that oftentimes, the response that you get from someone is really, it has to do with your approach. Not in an accusatory sense, but when the facts are in front of you, speak to the facts. That would be my position. And say, "Based on these facts, I would like for you, if you would, to help me to understand what I'm not seeing here." I know that's always served me well. So, starting with the leadership or the administration in the school, we have something where we have like fact-finding, to be allowed to, may I speak with some of the teachers in your school? And this could be anonymous, that very probably would be better served that way, and just to allow me to find out, what is it that you see? And having gathered all the information, bring that information back, again, to the principal. in the school and say, this is what we have found. Help me to understand how we should proceed with this. And taking that back with the other members of the Board of Education, then I believe that there is something, that's a start of a very good conversation. Thank you.
Ms. Dent?
Equity and accountability and ensuring that we hold the principals, not of school, but the principals, these key leaders, accountable for the lack of equity across the seven districts is something that you have to do with everything, not just one thing. So if you really want to change something, you have to put thought into doing that. You can't just do that just because it sounds good. So there's equity or inequities across the school, so what are we going to do about it? The real question is, what problem are we really trying to solve? If we're trying to solve equity, then you have to put that in everything that you're doing. So one of the things I would be focused on is trying to develop a strategic plan that makes equity across the school systems a top priority in all the decisions that we make within the Board for schools. The other one is accountability. As I shared with you earlier, if you want accountability, you have to write something that someone can be held accountable to. Your opinion is great, but who's going to stop me? Your moral compass is great, but are you within your legal boundaries to be able to do said thing? So if you really want to make a change with accountability, then you have to implement that in writing, so that it can be imposed. So I would definitely think that the two things that could fix it is make equity a top priority, and then putting that in a strategic plan to where it's codified in writing, so that we can make the change we're looking for.
Ms. Williams?
It would be irresponsible of me to speak on equitable issues without getting in contact with the community and what it is that they see. I would like to refer back to my previous tenure. I ran on the platform of building and bridging relationships. It's important to have the relationships there to open the dialogue on what these equitable issues may be in order to fix them. We cannot go in blindly, trying to solve problems without figuring out what the problems are. And for me, the only way to do that, and the way that we start, is through communication. So that's what I would do. I would want to communicate. I've been very open about how communication is important to me, and through communication, you gain trust. Through trust, you gain respect. And through that respect, we're able to work together to figure out what it is that's going on in our communities and create that change. Thank you.
Ms. Ma?
So, I think in order to hold, in order to develop any accountability method, I would tend towards developing metrics. Having said that, I think that it is not, you know, it's very easy for the board, who is, who is remote from the, again, being the boots on the ground, to develop the wrong metrics. So I think it's important to talk to the school leadership, the principals, as well as the students and the parents, to understand what are the correct metrics to apply to decide whether or not the students' needs with regard to equity are being met. And having said that, I think that, you know, you should develop, every, every person should have, every principal, whatever, should have the growth plan that, like, you know, at one month, you might be here, at six months, we want to be at this goal line, at 12 months, we want to be at this goal line. So set reasonable goals, so that they're attainable, and then, and then you can measure against that. And then, the way you hold them accountable is, is, you know, if you're not meeting your, if you're not meeting your, if you're not meeting the goal that we set, then we need to revisit, you know, why? Is it a resource issue? Is it, is it time? Do we need, do we need to take some of the responsibilities off of your plate? But all of that starts with understanding what the problem is, what, what needs, what needs to be met, what needs, need to be met, and setting milestones and goals for them to meet.
Ms. Hair?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hair, District Seven. Turning a little bit, we've talked a lot about the Board itself and policies and things like that. I'd like to know a little bit more about you personally, and I'd like to know, tell me a time where you failed, where you made a mistake, you had a misstep, and what did you take from that, and how does it, how does it impact you now in your, in your pursuit for this position?
Ms. Ma?
Oh, where to start? Let's see. God goodness, where did I fail? So many places. I started life as an academic, and I think for an academic, it is absolutely considered a failure to not be in academia for the rest of your life. I'm not in academia for the rest of my life. And so, so what I did was I retooled myself, and that's taken a long time, but I've retooled myself to try to address the issues that I think drove me out of science. And those issues have led me to understand and advocate for a greater understanding of the effects of social media. And that has brought me very much to the position where I am right now, to the work that I've been doing for the past several years. And, again, the reason why I applied to this position is because it has become increasingly clear to me that we need to start dealing with this issue with a lot younger crowd than we have been. And so, so where have I failed? I think that maybe I wasn't pure enough, whatever, I wasn't, I wasn't good enough to be an academic, and instead, I have focused on trying to fix that problem.
Ms. Dent?
So failing is always character building for me. So, as I stand here, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that I was hard-headed, did what I wanted to do, and got a lot of bumps and bruises along the way. One thing that I will share as what's prepared me and why I do the work that I do with children is because of my own personal experience. So my daughter, her name is Martina, she's 35 years old and very much an educated individual in her own right. But I was not a very forward-thinking parent. To teach, to tell you I've ever had to sit down with her and go through her homework, nope, didn't ever do that. That's teacher's job, and that's who I relied on to do all of that. And it worked, until it didn't. So, as I'm transitioning out of Hawaii, my daughter was going into the ninth grade. I went from Hawaii with her in the ninth grade, 10th grade, she was in El Paso. 11th grade, she was in Fort Stewart, Georgia. And 12th grade, she graduated on her own while I was in Iraq. The entire time, I never thought about the fact that she did not have a foundation, for which thing she had consistently, was her teachers. They would, they all, at every school, gathered around her, and regardless to what was going on, at the height of the war, the military was, you know, the place to be. But all of the educators nursed my daughter while I was there. And if I can give that back to one parent that's wearing his uniform, to let them know that that's what I want to do, is stand in the gap for them, that's what I really want to do. And so, my passion for why I help children, and why I'm focused on that, is because someone stood in the gap for me for 26 years. So I owe it to them to do the same.
Mr. Martin?
I've often heard it said, you play the hand you're dealt. I don't believe that to be true at all. I believe that on the table, there are 52 cards, and they're all face up. I have an older brother, Jackie, one years older. He picked the ace, king, queen, jack, and ten of spades. So did my younger brother, early in life. Jackie's only the third African-American ever to make full professor at Johns Hopkins University. He's vice president of the fourth largest hospital in the United States now. A military kid, military brat, we call ourselves. My younger brother teaches at South Carolina State. Me? Where did I fail? I didn't prepare myself when I had the same opportunity they had when I was in high school. As a consequence, I struggled for years, and I learned how to make it work by discarding three of those cards that I couldn't use, and picking up a couple of aces. And things have been wonderful. Retiring at the rank of E9, excelling in the federal government. But where I failed? I didn't prepare myself when I had the opportunity early. I tried desperately to make sure that doesn't happen to another young person, ever. Where else did I fail? I got married when I was 20, my wife was 17. And I fathered the way my father parented me. I was going to win every argument. I was going to be heard. And I had the opportunity to apologize publicly to my kids. I've had the opportunity to do it right, and I have been blessed to have the next generation of raising my grandkids. And my kids would look and say, Dad, you would never have let us get away with that. Well, Dad at 20, and Dad at 60 is different. So, those are my two failures. And I thank God for opportunities to have recouped them both.
Ms. Pickard? Mr. Volkey?
Pass.
Madam Chair?
Did we hear from?
Ms. Williams? On the last round of questions, sorry.
I'm terribly sorry. I've misread my own cheat sheet. It's your turn. Please go ahead, Ms. Williams.
It's quite all right. This failure that I'm about to share still stings a little bit. One of the members of this failure is actually in the audience right now, so. I was 13, and I was running for middle school coordinator for the Chesapeake Regional Association of Student Councils. I was passionate, I was fired up, I was ready, I felt like I was prepared, I knew I was just going to get it, and then I ran into Scott Howard. And he annihilated me. This is the first time I'm ever saying this, and I'm saying it publicly, so that means a lot. And I lost the election. I cried the entire ride back to school, I cried when I got home, I cried in my mother's lap. I felt so bad and defeated, because I thought that I prepped myself in the best way possible to win this and to be able to serve. And it was a harsh reality to come to, that it just wasn't my time. Scott was more prepared. Scott was ready to take on the responsibility. Scott had the support to take on the responsibility. I wasn't there. I was still struggling with the fact that my mother and father weren't together, and still figuring out that home life, still navigating this school, trying to figure out what my next step would be, going to high school, it just wasn't my time. And that's probably one of the harshest realities to come to still, is that sometimes, it's just not your time. But when something is meant for you, when it's right for you, it'll happen. And I was able to serve my community in other ways. I went on to do amazing things at Glenn Burney, and ultimately, I was able to be student board member. And that's an experience that I will cherish for the rest of my life. And it all started because I lost, I lost to Scott Howard.
Okay, Mr. Pruski, I'm sorry, Mr. Volkey, did you pass? Okay, Mr. Pruski?
I passed as well. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a question, but I do just want to say, as a product of the Anarundel County Public School System, myself, and the mother of three children currently in the school system, I'm so thankful that we have four outstanding candidates before us this evening, and I thank you again for applying. And I encourage all of you to continue your work in the community.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. I also do not have any further questions, so thank you again for this third round. And we are now in our period of discussion, which maybe, before anybody comments, I'll just say, this may feel a little bit awkward, but the county council is required, under the Open Meetings Act in our charter, our code, that this has to be completely open. We can't go in the back and have four of us discuss, nor can I force any of you to leave so that we can talk about you in private. There's no such thing. So this is what we have to do. Does any council member have a comment for discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Pruski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I can speak on behalf of my colleagues. Any of you that came up here and put yourself out to run for an elected position, I mean, I'm not going to clap again, but I thank you. From someone sitting here who served as a board member, I also lost elections, and I also was not appointed to the board the first time. And I know that's difficult, it's a long, lengthy process. I would agree with my colleagues, though, each of you brings something different. One of the things that I was paying close attention to, and not only writing your responses, though, Mr. Martin, you brought this up, about being ready and willing to go in. The council, just like Board of Education, there's a lot of hot priorities right now. I know my colleagues are getting issues about bus transportation that I don't control, right? But there are others that do, and obviously, the board will have to deal with it. I also know that, you know, mask, CRT, what's being taught, I mean, I'm just going to put out, these are things that you will have to discuss, you will take positions on. This is not something that, you know, we take lightly. But I appreciate each of you taking the time, regardless of my vote. You know, I do ask that you continue your service regardless, because as I said to you, I'm a product of that. Losing an election and not being chosen, that happens, right? Because obviously, there are people that, maybe some people view as qualified, or maybe better. But it's just amazing to see, and I just think District One has some, some great leaders that come forward. So I just want to thank you again for, for willing to do that, because it's not easy, right? To say, hey, I'm going to put my resume out there, people are going to ask me questions, and you've got to stick your neck out. So thank you again for, for willing to do that, and I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Anybody else? Ms. Radveen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think maybe, I'm thinking like the current President of the United States, considering the size of the body, so I can appoint all four of you. Because I think that each of you has, each of you has something different and unique to offer. And I, you know, I think all of you have something really wonderful to offer, different perspectives, different backgrounds, different aptitudes. And I wish we could, I wish, I truly wish we could just add four more seats to the Board, although I guess District One would be overrepresented, but. So, I, I don't know if that's really helpful in our discussion. I imagine my colleagues are feeling the same way. I don't know which of these values or qualities I think is, you know, is the most important, and that's going to be a tough discussion, and I'm not 100% clear in my mind, even though I have to vote first.
Does anyone else have a comment? Buy at least some more time, anybody? No? Okay, then, I believe we have a consensus that we should go ahead and proceed with voting tonight, as opposed to voting tomorrow. And so, Madam Secretary, I'll ask you to call the roll. I'm sorry?
Should we have the candidates go? Do you want to have them go back to their seats, or do you want them to come up here?
I think they can sit wherever they're comfortable. Okay, so Madam Secretary is going to be calling the roll, and the way this is going to work, we'll be beginning with Ms. Radveen, going around in the same order we did for questions. And we are going to say the name of the person that we're voting for. And then, either we'll have at least four votes for the same person, or we will need to vote again, and whoever has the fewest votes will be dropped at that point. Madam Secretary?
Ms. Radveen?
Gloria Dent?
Ms. Hair?
Madam Chair, may I give a brief remark to each?
You may.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. This has been incredible, and it's been an honor to learn more about each of you this evening. evening. Ms. Williams, it's clear you are a tireless advocate for the people in your district, and I thank you for that. Ms. Ma, I love your approach to problems and the way you start with the hypothesis, and then you set out to disprove it. I think your background is well-suited for public service. Mr. Martin, I think your record of mediation is phenomenal, and that's also something that is well-suited to public service. I find myself just thinking you're very warm and genuine, and I imagine as a mediator, you're tremendously successful with all of the folks you meet. Ms. Dent, you obviously have had to rise to challenges many times in your career already, and I think that is tremendously helpful to public service. So I think we are faced here with a very difficult decision, and I really do thank all of you for your participation here this evening. My vote is for Ms. Gloria Dent.
Ms. Pickard?
My vote is for Ms. Williams.
Mr. Volkey?
Martin.
Ms. Pruski?
Ms. Williams?
Ms. Fiedler?
Ms. Gloria?
Ms. Gloria Dent.
And Ms. Lacy?
Ms. Gloria Dent.
Madam Chair, members of the council, we have already reached, one of the candidates have, has received four votes, I should say. That would be Ms. Gloria Dent.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So, we now need to introduce Resolution Number 4421. Please read the title of Resolution Number 4421.
Madam Chair, excuse me just one moment. I believe Ms. Schultz is quickly preparing that with the name added to the resolution.
Okay.
We should be expecting her any moment, coming from one of these doors here. My apologies, I was thinking that we were going to have a different recess here.
That's okay. It happens.
However. Okay, my apologies. Madam Chair, would you like me to read the title or the full resolution? We did not do any kind of a motion to have the partial reading accepted?
You're right, we didn't. Why don't you read the full motion, the full resolution, please?
Okay. Resolution Number 4421. Resolution electing a qualified individual to fill the vacancy in the office of the elected member from District One on the Board of Education for Anarundel County. Whereas, a vacancy exists in the office of the elected member from District One on the Board of Education, and whereas Section 3-2A-04 of the Education Article of State Code requires the county council to select a qualified individual to fill any vacancy in the office of an elected member of the Board for the remainder of the term and until a successor is elected and qualifies. And whereas, by Resolution Number 4021, the council determined a process for filling the vacancy in the office of the elected member from District One on the Board of Education for Anarundel County. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of Anarundel County, Maryland, that it hereby elects Gloria Dent to serve as the District One representative on the Board of Education for Anarundel County for the remainder of a term that ends on December 1st, 2024, and until a successor is elected and qualifies. And be it further resolved that the county council hereby extends its warmest welcome and congratulations to the new District One representative on the Board of Education for Anarundel County. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Gloria Dent. And be, be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Board of Education for Anarundel County.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any discussion on the resolution?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Pruski?
Again, congratulations, obviously, and I want to thank again the other folks, and I think this needs to be said again, don't give up, sitting here like I did before, to all of you, and thank you for coming out, I appreciate it, and congratulations, Ms. Dent. I'd like to give you a round of applause.
Anyone else with a comment? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 4421.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 4421 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Congratulations to Ms. Dent, and thank you so much, Mr. Martin, Ms. Ma, and Ms. Williams. I look forward to seeing you around the district soon. You know how to reach me. And thank you all again, you've been outstanding. Ms. Dent, we wish you all the best as a board member. And with that, is there any other business before the county council tonight? Singnan? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Al.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Tuesday, September 14th, at 9:00 a.m. for a virtual county council work session. Good night.